Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the meeting that we started earlier today at 2:00 for the April 1st Board of Supervisors meeting. We now have to certify the closed meeting.
Yes, if you would allow me.
Yes, sir.
Do each of you certify to that, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors in closed meeting? If you could just call the rule.
Ms. Comer?
Yeah, aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
And aye also.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We don't have any public hearings, so we're going into the public comment period for this evening. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up to the mic, and give us your name and your district.
In reference to the discussion earlier about...
Name and district.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Monica Worth, Piedmont District. In reference to the discussion earlier about the finding out what options were for having outside legal counsel for various parts of the discussion of the zoning ordinance revisions, anything that would come along. I guess my point is, I'm interested in that particularly for the land use section of that discussion, but also could see the value of having it available, however, whatever the options are, to have a firm that can address a number of different parts to support staff and to provide very specific expertise that I think the last process that we went through showed a lot of different areas in which it would be very difficult to have a breadth of expertise that would cover everything. And without meaning any disrespect to staff and to our county attorney in particular, I would be very much in favor of seeing that we had someone as close to on-call as possible, not meaning that we have to keep them on retainer, but that there's some relationship through which they could remain familiar with what's going on here and advise the process, particularly as we make decisions going forward with the Berkeley Group. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Hunt, and I live in Jackson District. I thought it might be helpful to have a hard copy versus just the electronic copy of the citizen letter and red line draft to refer to. And also at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the current time limits on temporary signs and, I don't want to say confusion, but just, you know, it's not all the same. And so I thought it might be, I just printed that particular section from our current ordinance for ease of reference. So has the Board of Supervisors discuss the current proposed sign ordinance? It bears repeating, the whole premise for updating the sign ordinance is to comply with the Reed-Gilbert decision. And somehow, this has morphed into proposed changes that create several new sign categories, significantly increase the amount of signage that would be permitted throughout the county. The overwhelming public comment expressed the desire to not expand our sign ordinance beyond the limits of our current ordinance. But the proposal before you goes well beyond the limits that have been in place for decades. Citizens have submitted specific comments and a red line draft to the Board of Supervisors on September 28th of '23 and again on March 1st last month detailing the changes that better suit our county and reflect protection of our scenic resources in accordance with our comp plan. There has been a petition signed by nearly 80 residents expressing concerns about the proposed areas of expansion. To date, the public has not had any acknowledgement or feedback, and citizen comments have not been incorporated into what the Board of Supervisors is considering. The public has asked that citizen recommendations be included in any proposed language going forward to be considered by the Board, but we have yet to see this done. The sign ordinance is on the agenda, but the detailed feedback the public provided is not on Board docs, even though citizens ask that it be made part of the public record for this discussion. There is significant public concern about the proposed expansion of off-premacy signs, temporary signs including hay bale signs, the exclusion of art and certain flags from the ordinance, allowing animated commercial zone signs, vehicle signs, and other miscellaneous provisions. Exempting art and flags from the ordinance is a recipe for disaster. We do not want to be inviting problems in such a nebulous area as interpreting what constitutes art versus commercial advertising dressed up as art. We do not need to add new expansive definition, a new expansive definition for flags. We need to simply regulate size and number and leave it at that. We do not currently permit animated signs. The fact that there are examples out there that violate our current zoning ordinance is not a reason to expand it and allow them now. They are not compatible with our rural scenic county. We do not want to be expanding the number and duration of temporary signs out there that violate our current zoning ordinance is not a reason to expand it, to allow them now. They are not compatible with our rural scenic county. We should keep the current limits of one sign with a 30-day limit and a possible 30-day extension. We should not simply take what had been an upper limit for wayside stands and apply it across the board. The size, scope, and duration here are excessive, and I urge you to reconsider this. The medium of a temporary sign, as in hay, should not be the basis for granting what amounts to a carve-out for those with access to a particular type of format in a particular location. We should not provide a select minority, myself included, with a huge megaphone for the purposes of circumventing size limits placed on other types of temporary signage. Off-premacy signs currently require a Board of Supervisors special exception requirement, and that should remain so. I am asking, again, that before this matter is further addressed or comes to any vote, that you give full consideration to the citizen recommendations and that they be posted on Board docs for notice to the broader community. The last Board of Supervisors meeting on March 4th, Supervisor Donna made a very insightful comment. While it was in reference to the tourist home special use permits and the two-year wait for a permit application, it is relevant here. She said, "When things are happening around you and residents are telling you to keep rappahannock rappahannock, we are being asked to do something." We is in the Board. Citizens are saying to you, "Do not expand our sign ordinance beyond the limits of our current ordinance. Do not create new categories of signage that would allow expansion. Incorporate citizen feedback in the proposed language being considered. It is disheartening to engage in the public process and not feel heard. When members of the community diligently provide meaningful feedback and all we hear is chirping crickets, it's disheartening. People care. We want to preserve what we have here. We don't want our sign ordinance expanded. We don't want our zoning ordinance expanded. We don't want to invite speculative development into rappahannock. We are asking to please keep rappahannock rappahannock." Thank you.
Any one else?
Mary Catherine Ishu, Piedmont. I guess just, hopefully briefly. So we all know we're facing development pressures in this county. We all know our county is going to develop. It will. There's a lot of by right, actual by right uses that people can do and they will do, and it will develop and grow. But we are unique in that we are trying to keep our somewhat small county rural, of course, and protect large scenic landscapes that, that's not the goal of all counties. It's our goal. And so you have two things on the agenda tonight that are not open for public comment. You'll be considering one is the sign ordinance and one is an update from the Planning Commission on the rewrite of the Berkeley Group amendments. In terms of keeping our county rural, if we can accomplish that, zoning is one of the important tools in our toolkit. It's not the only tool by any means, but it's important. And before the Planning Commission, folks have brought up, I know this has been a lengthy process before the Planning Commission, the Board has considered it some as well. We spent a lot of money, I'm sure, on the Berkeley Group, I don't know how much, but a lot. But folks have, citizens have brought up before the Planning Commission whether we're actually heading in the right direction with what we're doing. And I know there's been a lot of thought put into this, but I have just started my own deep dive into the 240-page document from the Berkeley Group, the latest, the latest document. And while I have a long way to go in it, what it strikes me as initially is what I've expressed concerns about previously, which is that it is, we're attempting to mirror the ordinances of counties that have very different land use goals from ours. We're attempting to rewrite it in a structure and a format that mirrors a lot of other counties. And in so doing, you know, we are changing a lot of, a lot of things along the way, and I don't know that that's been noted in every instance. I think in zoning, our zoning ordinance does have to be updated. We know that. We have things in our zoning ordinance that have to be done. We have things that could be done if we wanted to. And then we have some things that we really shouldn't be doing at all. And it's hard to follow everything that we're doing in this very large rewrite that we're doing, but it does appear to me that we are doing some of the things that we might want to do, clarifying a few things. We are doing a number of things that we may not want to do, but we have yet to do the things that we probably need to do. And some of those are, as we've said before, addressing updates to our ordinance based on the county code. We are doing, we haven't yet looked at changing our solar provisions to incorporate new allowances under the county code. We have not yet at all considered, as far as I'm aware, at least, the impact of, or potential impact of data center development. We have not, for at least a decade now, I don't know how old that provision is, taken advantage of voluntary downzoning provisions in the county code, I mean, in the state code. We have not updated our telecommunications provisions so that they mirror state code requirements, and there are a few others. We are addressing, I believe in this draft, attempting to address conditional proffer language, which is very important. But in so doing, again, I haven't fully had a chance to look at that section yet, but I've understood that in so doing, we're broadening it somewhat. It seems to me that part of what we're doing is, is making an easier roadmap for development interests to figure out how to develop our county. And I just, I'm not sure that's where we want to be going. So I just hope that you'll keep the broader picture in mind, make sure that when the Planning Commission is working with the Berkeley Group on this, that we really have a clear idea of what we want as an outcome. And so following up on some other comments, I also hope that we'll keep in mind the importance of, you know, however frustrating it may be, it's frustrating on both sides, to work closely with citizens who are, who are interested in that. People are taking a lot of time on their own and a lot of interest and doing a lot of work on these issues. And to keep a constructive, open, and cooperative relationship is really going to keep us from having things exploding at the last minute. And we all care, we all want to work on this together, so thank you for your time.
Anybody else public comment? All right. I only have one person on Zoom, and I don't think she's there for public comment. If I'm wrong, let me know. Raise your hand. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. First item on all business is the sign ordinance.
At your last meeting, there was a general, Ms. Smith asked to have the sign ordinance on that agenda, just say, "Where are we? What are we doing? Are we moving this forward?"
I get the question at the Planning Commission all the time.
So at that time, the Board discussed it and said, "Well," and I said, "Well, there's a lot of moving parts right now." But at the end of the conversation, it was, "Well, there are four or five, or five or six kind of big-picture topics, and maybe in the evenings, we can begin to talk about those big-picture topics to maybe build some consensus among the Board." I hear from the public, wish there was opportunity tonight, I'm not sure, but what the comment was that there are two topics on the agenda without opportunity for public comment, which we just had. And so there's been no editing of the proposed sign ordinance since it was heard for public hearing and basically deemed by this Board not to be in a form ready to move forward. There's been no drafting of any revised language because I think the feeling was that you need to get your arms around the big-picture areas and how you want them to be included into the ordinance. And I'm sure at some point in time, you will review in detail the suggested citizen language, which I think they drafted code. You're not at the drafting code stage in this iteration of the sign ordinance. You're at the concept stage. So that's where we are. I did update the highlight presentation that I originally delivered in August and just updated it today to try to guide your discussion. You said you wanted to talk about the big kind of main points, and so one of those is off-premise, another is temporary. I tried to expand the presentation on those and get some feedback on whether there's a particular direction the Board wants to go in relative to what is allowed, what's not allowed, the numbers that are allowed, the sizes that are allowed, if you want to get into that detail, or you want to hold that off to just say, you don't want any off-premise signs allowed, you can do that too. But staffs really can't move the ball forward unless we know what you, what areas you want to work on and whether there are broad areas that you want to frame in. So I can walk through this updated presentation. I can answer questions. The other document attached is simply the ordinance as it was just after the public hearing when I was directed to fix the typo, which I found one and fixed it. So that's where we are.
For me, I'm wondering, instead of looking at six different items, if it makes sense to kind of prioritize and then try to attack based on prioritization. I don't know what you...
I think you ultimately need to touch on all of them before you begin to draft a revised document. You can see on Board docs, I have linked over to the existing ordinance sections for each of these. So you can, we can track back over and see what the existing language is, if that would be helpful.
I think, I mean, I'll, I'll just, temporary signs to me seems like a big category and I think we start there, in my opinion. It's, I think people have strong, strong feelings about temporary signs, and I think this also dovetails with a separate discussion about hay bale signs and all that, just as a starting point. We start there. It's a bit of a morass, but I think all, all aspects of this are a bit of a morass.
And ultimately, it, it was the issue behind Reed versus Tenegill.
Correct. So I see it as threshold, I guess. So last, last we talked about this, I mean, I expressed a concern about what felt like was a reaction to one political sign that happened to be on hay bales. And I understand that our current draft has, yeah, thank you. So I'd like, I'd like to think through and talk about how we could get away from calling out something that really is, it was, it was a one-off, and I, I think that if we can approach temporary signs with time limits as kind of the key, key limitation, maybe we don't have to go down this rabbit hole of calling these out. I just...
If you want to have one class, you're compelled to not differentiate between political sign, temporary signs and a church temper, you know?
Right.
Different categories, right? And so this is, was deemed to be a different animal, this, the hay bale thing. And you most certainly do not need to have a category that tries to package up what is and is not acceptable for someone who stacks up hay bales and puts letters on them. You don't put it in the ordinance, and it's not a use provided for. It would be temporary under any typical measure, and it would have to meet the area limits that are defined elsewhere, which are much, 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 much smaller than this. And so the yellow is the critical question. And so do you want to limit dimension setback and duration of whatever these things are? Or do you want to prohibit them? And then what do you do when they happen? And that's, that's the fundamental question. And you, we can take either path. Right now, our ordinance is pretty messy, and it's really hard to think that we're going to prosecute or enforce anything. And from a staff perspective, we just need to know, are they allowed or not? And, and you know, we may have opinions on what we think will be easier in the long run to enforce, but we just need to know if you want to allow them or not. And if you don't want to allow them, we will carve them out of the ordinance, and when they pop up, we'll send a letter, and hopefully things will play out before we ever get to court. And if it's the other way around, and it's too big, we'll send a letter saying it's too big, and we'll be in the same situation in that case. Or they'll say, "I'll stay within the rules, and I'll only do 25, or 20, or 10, or however many is the number that you think is the right number." This is our opportunity. Put it in a box or exclude it.
And how many calls were generated when this went up? I think it was the most in...
Many.
Building...
And most of them, we just said, you know...
Fully department history.
We're, we have so many inconsistencies in our ordinance right now relative to temporary signs, we really can't possibly enforce it.
And so just, just so everyone knows, being representative on the Planning Commission, the language that's currently intact is what I believe the county administrator, county attorney, and the Planning Commission received feedback on through our processes in an attempt to get our hands around, you know, what might be the answer when people call again next time, if there is a next time.
Yeah. And so that was an attempt to carve it in with certain regulations that limit dimension setback duration. And you don't have to do that. Or you can have a much smaller box, or you can just say, "No, not allowed. You're not allowed to put letters on your bales and hay."
Well, I mean, if we have a sign ordinance, I mean, that's what it's for, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, in my, in my view, you know, we just have one size, temporary, and I find that rappahannock, the people who really need them are people who have businesses, small businesses, who are trying to sell stuff. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what it is. I mean, yeah, you get these one-off, you know, the irony is, is that you can't put on those hay bales for sale, hay for sale. That, I mean, that's just not commonsensical. So it's like, you could, yeah, I mean, it's a different class of speech, non-commercial, and I get that, but it's like, okay, well, hold on a second. Why don't we just have one size, temporary, so that businesses can generate money, they can do what they need to do, and have that discussion?
Sure.
I mean, that seems the most straightforward thing we can do because the sign ordinance...
With size and a time limit.
Yeah, just size and a time limit. And it's like, that's what it has been, and just be fair to everybody.
Yeah. So staff favors the language you have here and encourages the Board to, through the assistance of the public who's spoken, change the red things. You want one sign per property? Stick a one in there. You want something other than 50 square feet aggregate? Change that number. You want the duration to be 100 days, 90 days, 10 days, 30 days? Do that. If you want to allow an extension administratively, then include that. This is easy to do. We just pick the numbers.
I just wanted to say too, again, and I don't mean to interrupt, but just to, to frame what you're reading, again, what this is largely is language drafted by the county administrator and the county attorney due by the Planning Commission that reflects circumstances that already exist in the county and that was trying to incorporate, as you said, what small businesses need to attract business and what we found to be appropriate through our hearing process. And therefore, this is what was referred to the Board.
Yeah, this one's pretty good, except I would maybe change, what is the current sign ordinance? It's 90 days?
Well, it's non-workable.
I'm just saying, what is it in the code?
One temporary sign shall be allowed for a period of not to exceed 30, parentheses, three consecutive days. Okay, consecutive days.
Yeah.
Which means I can pull it up for a day or an hour, and stick it back in. However, if you want to talk about signs for advertising or an opening or sale or special event, they're limited to 60 days in a year.
Right.
The other ones aren't limited to 60 days in a year, only if you're advertising an opening or sale or a special event.
Sounds illegal.
We can't, none of this is workable, right? You can have them be 50 square feet in there and 10 feet tall, too.
Well, so I, I've heard from people that, you know, really need them and rely on them. And I've heard from people who don't want them at all. I think that's impractical. And so then it's just about really like, you had that picture of Thornton River Orchard up there, but like, I mean...
Well, here's two temporary signs right here.
Yeah, but people really do rely on those.
Maybe throw one over there.
And so it's like, I just think making a size limit and getting rid of subcategories of temporary signs is probably the way forward.
So we, we carried forward the 50.
I mean, there you go.
I just...
And then maybe tweak the 100 days.
We reduced it to eight feet.
Then you can just move it.
You want it to be some other number of days? It can be whatever days you want. This is worthless. Someone thinks that you're limited to 30 days, it's delusion. There's no way to enforce it.
Yeah.
We go send a letter, "Oh, no, I picked that up last week and put it in a different spot."
Yeah.
So as I note on here, the most important thing that, you know, give credit to Mr. Goff, is we will require the date of first display to be written on the sign. So you do that, you go out there, if it's written out there and it's within the right number of days, it's legal.
So I think the question really is, is about like, just think about the high-traffic areas where people come out and they are, you know, you got these businesses that are, rappahannock businesses tend to be seasonal. And they really do need to attract people to get people to know that they're there. And so, I mean, I, I do think that that's a really important conversation about, okay, now we're talking about size and how many are allowed on a piece of property.
Inherent in this discussion is, where is the sign located? These are located on the premise that is receiving these.
On the right way.
Well, those are in the right way, and they're legal, but, probably. But you have, can this person put it on the next parcel up? That's off-premise.
Right.
Do you want to allow that or not?
When you talk about temporary, like road signs or like vegetable set stands, stuff like that too, you got to keep in mind the empirical evidence of, do we have data, crash, crash data that can be attributed to sign collecting? So when Gary and I approached this, we went out and said, "What do we already have? One, is there a hue and cry against it? And two, can we actually pin any objective fact on, at the feet of an offending sign? It may be aesthetically offensive or whatever, but you can't actually tie a crash to it." Well, that's the fundamental constitutional justification for zoning of signs on the side of the highway is, it doesn't, you know, you have to, you have to tie it to a public safety concern. So one of the other problems was, okay, so when you, when you look at the, the number of signage that actually was there and has been there, albeit illegally, can you attribute to it a problem because the, the property owner's going to say two things. One, I rely on it as land says, to attract business. And two, what harm is it doing? So, you know, in order to actually make our ordinance solid, it should reflect a model of reality that at this baseline, we know that there's not a public safety problem.
Well, yeah, so between there and just on the other side of Bee Spring, there's got to be 100 signs.
There's a bunch.
I mean, there's got to be a million.
Well, there's, there's fixed signs down Bee Spring.
Yeah, I would just go through, and it's like, I mean, the question really is, is like, I mean...
How many do you want?
I just...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, I, I just, I'm, you know, I'm just, we've had this conversation about what can we do to help businesses rappahannock. And I just am, I, I feel there's a need to be able to let people advertise in the right way. in the right way, the way that they feel is the best for their business, that is reasonable. And I, I'm finding that, you know, if you just look at this picture and what they're doing up there, it's like, that's a lot of signs.
Now, that's the apple work.
Yeah. And, you know, when the co-op is putting out several signs, I mean, it's like, I did not hear a hue and cry about people doing this. But now that we have to go back and tend to this, it, I mean, it is complicated because it's now we are, well.
Just go up.
What I was, what I was gonna ask or is, just testing, not testing, but just plain, if you look at a community, like, I might have mentioned in our meetings, like, we have a, a community in Wisconsin called Door County. It's the thumb on the, if you look at the state of Wisconsin, it's the peninsula of Wisconsin. And you, you drive through there and it's a visually soothing place. There are no, there are no junkie signs anywhere, really. But just following up on what you said, I mean, did that community, I don't think that community ever adopted an ordinance that was aimed at solving a public safety problem. So I just want to understand sort of that analysis.
Well, case law, if you know, looking at it, like, with regard to signs, and I first tackled this, I actually took a First Amendment class in, in law school, which was fascinating. And I had a great professor and, so, a lot of this stems out of, of the 1920s and especially very large signs on things like beer wagons and all this kind of stuff. And so, the, a lot of case law starts out originating with, you know, well, wait a minute, there's a First Amendment that lets you say what you want to. But, we're gonna, we're gonna carve out a constitutional category for commercial speech. And so in order to justify regulating the commercial speech, that's when they started saying that there needs to be a public safety requirement. So, what I'm referring to, not in particular, I mean, you can refer to St. Martha's Vineyard as Mr. Parish likes it.
Yeah, I tried to use a different example. That's where I was going, but it's, I'm, I'm talking about the Nantucket in Wisconsin.
And ultimately, if, if the board wanted to do that, I imagine you would hear from your business owners and you, it would face the scrutiny of public input through public hearings. And then ultimately, somebody can challenge whether it was, you know, this fairly debatable standard and all that stuff and the courts might decide, I don't know. Is there, do you have the, the evidence to show that you're making reasonable restrictions if you wanted to say, no signs or no temporary signs?
I mean, Williamsburg has very restrictive ordinance because, but here again, the, the justification, I just don't know, i- is because it's colonial and it was, you know, it's a quote special place.
Well, we can control the material, right? So I just looked it up and it's, in Nantucket, it's, it's no signs of any kind, but if you do have one, it has to be made out of wood.
It has to be made out of wood?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Which limits just about.
Yeah.
And that makes it very expensive.
Yeah.
How do you get a piece of wood in the wind? So, I think you can do that kind of thing, correct? Material, size.
As long as, as long as it's content neutral now, it's a, read detail, really is all about content neutrality, which to me wasn't all that revolutionary an idea. Although, you know, zoning ordinance historically have been replete with non-content regulation. So, you know.
But they, they felt like they weren't regulating content and they just had different rules for the church sign versus the, versus the political sign versus, you know, but it's, it's there.
You know, it's like the, the kid in the go-go, girls, girls, girl, you know, neon signs and stuff, and those were offensive. You know, especially in Baptist town, so was dancing, so was drinking beer. So drinking beer signs were offensive. And so was dance hall signs, all these things. And so, but the First Amendment says you can say what you want to, within reason. Even the regulation of commercial speech has to have a, a legitimate or compelling governmental interest behind it. You can't just regulate it because you don't like the sign saying girls, girls, girl, even if it is a commercial sign. So, what the, the whole project has been, is to say, okay, look at what's out there. There's no hue and cry and no public safety issue, you might want to use it as the baseline to be on the safe side. And then also too, that, that your deliberations about those decisions are informed by what I'm telling.
And that is an expansion of what is in the ordinance today. Albeit, the ordinance today hasn't been enforced, I don't, maybe never, I don't know. People, people been here longer, a lot longer than I have, but.
Which, that should be question number one, if we're not gonna enforce something, why have a rule? So if we.
Agreed.
Write something, you gotta enforce it.
Well, the message, certain message the staff is that, these are the things we want enforced.
How do, I could just ask another obvious question here. A, a large sign, a large political sign on hay bales, and we come in and we, we write a sign ordinance that has, that basically lumps anything like that into just a broad category, temporary signs. And we, we prescribe a limitation on size, we definitely avoid any limitation or restriction on content, we'd be guilty. And then we prescribe a limitation on the duration of, or the amount of time that a temporary sign, including a big political sign on hay bales, can stand. How, I mean, this, I'm, I'm clearly missing the obvious, but going back to your point about, hey, First Amendment, you should be able to say what you want to say. How, how do we not end up in court by telling a, a person with a large agricultural property that they can't say what they want on the side of hay bales that they happen to have lying around?
Well, how do you end up not in court? Is that the, is that the question?
You still fit.
What?
Winning in court is the, is the question. You can end up in court any day for anything.
Winning is really what I was worried about when I was thinking up these rules because I said, you know, hey, look, first of all, the way I drafted that, it doesn't say political sign. It just has no, not, it's like non-commercial speech. And then as to the amplification, the question that has been brought up, you know, why should this person be in a privileged position to have a large megaphone? Well, why should the little tiny property owner on the corner of 522 and 211 have that large megaphone? So I think it's kind of an irrational sort of approach to it. Because, you know, location is arbitrary because of the development road system, you know, you can't really do anything about that. So, with regard to, is it political? No, that's not the issue. It could say Jesus saves, and that's religious, but it's also protected by the First Amendment. It could also say Satan saves, and that's also protected by the First Amendment. But what it can say is Edith Joes, if Joes isn't, is a commercial establishment.
Or buy this hay.
Or buy this hay, although that's where I'm here too. I've seen forty bucks a bale, you know, there's a lot of bales.
Well, now, if it was less than 50 square feet, you could put that on a bale. You just can't do it. So the question is, if, can we have a level playing field for this, one limit for 50 square feet? Well, that doesn't mean, that's meaningless on a hay bale sign. And if you did a number that was big enough to make a hay bale sign, or what we've seen makes sense, it's way too big for any other property that's in a village or a commercial setting.
Could we go back to the hay bale sign, we'll see, not all of its message. Some of it's simply visual. Okay, American flags, okay, or, or like basic American flags, or they could be succession flags, Monty Boys, or they could be District of Columbia, you know? That, so what I'm saying is that that's not necessarily.
The first Washington on the moon.
A sign. It's also just art. But especially if you don't find that. So, what I'm saying to you is, the, the best way to do it is to find a reasonable road down the middle that allows the use, but regulates it reasonably. And keeping in mind that you gotta put the hook into it of, there always has to be a public safety under, underpinning for any such restriction on someone's First Amendment rights.
So how about the question of commercial versus non-commercial?
Well, Supreme Court said, okay, that's a category that can be regulated.
Okay.
Commercial speech.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, also.
The, the big fat used, you know, beer brewery wagons in New York City back in 1926. So, there, that's a carve-out, a constitutional carve-out. So that there's less scrutiny of a government regulation that regulates commercial speech because of that reason, it's, you know, because of the early case law. They decided against the business ownership.
So, my suggestion though was a policy argument about non-commercial speech is the highest protected speech in America. And regardless of where you live, I think it should be the same size. I, I do see your point that if you've got the old Estes house in Sperryville, you've got vis, you've got location, fine. But I think as a policy argument, I'm more comfortable with giving everybody the same megaphone. That's just me. I think, and so I just would limit it to size. I would just limit it to size and, and, and the, the amount of time you can have it out.
You're saying non-commercial temporary signs or you're saying?
Well, we can put a limit on the biggest sign you can have. And if we say the biggest temporary sign you can have is four by four feet, that's it. Done. I mean, we don't, I don't.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, I don't think we need to get into, and maybe this is your point, Mr. Goff, which is that, well, yeah, but what people do, what are we gonna do? Well, we do what we do when people are out of compliance with our ordinance. I mean, we, we have like a million opportunities for people to say, I see that and I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna do this. And so I'm just saying that as a policy argument, I think it's the best to find what works for most people and to approach it that way. And my fear is that I don't, as a governmental body, want to go out and tell businesses what they know works, tell them that they're wrong, or because for aesthetic reasons, we don't like it. I, I get that. But at the same time, we have at least three or four orchards that really rely on signs, for real. And I would not feel comfortable telling them they can't do that.
And it would be nice if we could still say, orchards, wayside stands, you get different rules.
Yeah.
But we can't.
But we cannot. So then it goes into, okay, well then you're an off-premise sign and how do we treat those? Which gets into the temporary billboards.
Temporary or permanent?
Yeah. Right, right, right.
It is.
And so then, we need to figure that out and, so, I, I would just limit it to, to size temporary sign, the biggest one you can have and have.
So today, the ordinance tries to make that 50 square feet no bigger than 10 feet high. Right? And, and then you can do it for this 33, 30.
I mean exclusively with no subcategory for temporary sign, which would eliminate the hay bales.
Oh, you want it to be for permanent and temporary, one?
I want one tempor, I, I just think it makes the most sense to have one temporary sign. This is, this is the biggest it can be, this is how long you can have it.
Okay.
We don't need to do 500 square feet, just 'cause it's made of hay. Unless, unless I'm just, this is my policy argument, unless everybody gets it.
So.
Because I, I don't, I don't get why one person can put up a sign that says, the Allman Brothers are the best band in the world, but then down the road, because they don't have the acreage, they can't.
Yeah, I think you make the same argument for elevation, that, you know, one person could put a star up on top of the mountain and everybody can see it, but in the valley, it's not the same way.
Well, maybe, but people do do that.
Sure. So, in your concept of one size sign, should we, should we have one sign? Or should it be like, as envisioned here, where, okay, 50 square feet, you can have one sign that's 50 square feet? You can have five signs that make up 50 square feet in any combination you want?
I can't sit in this room and then know that these people are doing this, making money off of it, make a decision that then we have to go tell them, you can't do that. I, I'm not okay with that. Like, I, I, that just seems wrong to me.
And that's where we came from.
Well, I'm just saying, for me, I, I get it, and I'm saying that as a tourist county, and, and a county that relies on a lot of people who currently have a ton of signs, and people have accepted them for years, years, years and years and years, it's gonna be very difficult to now tell them, oh, the thing you've been doing for 25 years, you can't do.
Now, what I did write at the bottom, you could, you could make a different rule for the highway commercial zone. You know, if there's particular zoning districts that you see differentiation makes sense, you could do that. Only, you know, diff, like these, what we tried to do here, in your commercial zones, you get to have fluttery flags, no blinking lights, you can have fluttery flags of certain size. Now, we don't have to allow that, but as I noted at the bottom, do we want to allow open flags or not? Because that's an animated sign and they're everywhere and they should be all getting violation notices. That's, that's just silly.
Yep.
So, allow it or don't allow it, but I think we should probably allow a commercial business to have an open flag. And by the way, the visitor center has one, good thing the county doesn't have to follow the zoning ordinance.
We're.
Yeah, we are.
Really?
People love it when we say things like that. That's our favorite.
No, but you can raise your next cell. So, you know, it's, it's practical. Do we want, do you want to allow these things? And, you know, it's not allowed in the current ordinance at all.
I have to say, I, I sometimes struggle and I hear from folks in agriculture that they wonder if they will be asked to remove some of their signage if we adopt this, they wonder if it's too restrictive. And I, I have to say, I think we tried very hard at the planning commission to strike the balance. And the fact of it is, there, we really don't get complaints about the signs that are out in the community. The only sign that I remember ever getting a complaint on besides the welcome to Sperryville sign, is the billboard, if you go up the mountain, when somebody put the hot pink billboard up like two years ago with the guy on a motorcycle, I think he was selling insurance for motorcycle riders, ironically enough. Everybody hated that. I got a couple of calls about that one, 'cause it was hot pink and aesthetically not pleasing. But now I think Smokey the Bear is on there and it's the same size, same location as it always has been, but it's Smokey the Bear, and who doesn't love Smokey the Bear? And, you know, not a single call about Smokey. But that's the kind of, the kind of content that we absolutely can't base our ordinance on, and that's why it's so very challenging.
I know, updating it now with all these, like that signs particularly, I know so many people who use that sign.
Yeah, so you don't have to allow them to say nectarines and peaches. Just say Deck Jenkins Orchard up here, turn right.
I know, but I want to know when the nectarines are in season, Gary, 'cause the nectarines are really good.
I mean, I, I use those signs, literally. I mean, they're right outside of Woodville, and if the kids are in the car and I see that they put the peach sign up, I can go there.
Yeah.
It's nice to know when the fruit's actually there.
I mean, it's just this tough places.
So, do, and you would have to allow similar opportunity for others. So, when we drafted the ordinance, we tried to put it in as tight of a box as possible and said, yeah, you can have one of these. You can, anybody can get the directional sign if they're not on a primary, okay? Makes sense. If you're on a primary, you don't need an off-road sign, you can put it on your property, right? If you're off of the primary down Yancey Road, or wherever, then you need to tell people how to get to your place. And then maybe, if it's obvious that you need to provide additional information, wording's a little bit different in the ordinance, you can have this extra expanded message through an off-premise sign, if and only if you happen to have a sign permit for your actual place of business.
So.
Which means somebody from outside the county can't get one.
So billboards in Virginia are no, right, there's the.
Right, there's state law.
And so the ones that are existing of grandfather, or they're.
I guess you call it.
Whatever. And you can't, you can only do half their value in fixing before you tear them down or whatever that is.
Yeah, there's some kind of.
They're wriggly by the.
Okay, so any of these other ones could not, for instance, be, you couldn't put an advertisement for Deutsche Bank on one of these?
No, they couldn't, unless Deutsche Bank has a sign on their Deutsche.
Go to Washington. Yeah, but they have to be, I'm presuming that there's no Deutsche Bank in, in Rappahannock.
Right.
You can't do that.
And you can't do the motorcycle insurance guy and you can't do new grade hoppers and you can't do.
SEC, LLC.
But Smokey Bear's government speaks, so that's, that's.
Well, plus he's cute.
I have to put a plug in for the Rappahannock County Fire Department Facebook page for seeing.
A whole other category.
Yeah, yeah, it's true, but it is not a peep about Smokey.
So, so do we have to-
But everybody else.
Do we have to, I, I think I know the answer, but I'm just gonna ask it. Um, I assume that we can't put out a public hearing notice by, uh, by portions of the sign order.
I don't think it would be a, a formal public hearing in the sense that one's legally required, but you can tell the public you wanna hear what they have to say about anything anytime.
So, I mean, I, I don't necessarily agree with Van, um, but it also seems like, on the temporary sign front, if we wanted to just lock in duration and square footage and just hear what people say about that.
Yeah, and you've had several citizens work on some drafts that has some, I guess, diverse input into that.
Cuz temporary, I mean, to me, as I said at the outset, temporary signs seems to be, uh, what, one of several morasses, in this whole sign ordinance question, but it seems to be the big one, in part because this is where the whole hay bale debate started, and that's probably where I'll end up disagreeing with.
And it, it moves on to the hate has no home and the political signs that are up for eight months and all that. If you want any ability to enforce things like that, then you need, you know, that rigid, consistent
Yeah.
uh, requirement.
The feedback we received had the number of temporary signs allowed per lot. In no case, uh, temporary signs exceed a total aggregate of fifty square feet or eight feet tall. And then temporary signs shall not be displayed for more than sixty consecutive days, it must bear the first date of display on the sign.
What, did they have a maximum number?
It said a one, a maximum of one, is, was what they were saying, but-
So you only get to root for one politician at a time, just?
Temporary signs, yep. But my question is, and it's not every business, but so many businesses are seasonal, like ice cream sales that probably start in April and end in October, they're gonna have to come back?
Oh, so temporary signs do not require you to actually get a permit.
Okay.
They require you to follow the rules, and if you don't follow the rules, then you can get in trouble, if you don't come to us and get a permit.
What's the length of time for temporary, though?
Well, it's, today it's nonsensical. The proposed draft was a hundred days, with an extension.
Of a hundred days.
Of a hundred days, so.
With, with the date on the back.
With the date on the back, and so citizens said, that's too long. Well, right now, it's thirty consecutive days. And you proved that it's not been more than, I mean-
Yeah. I'm just wondering if somehow we could do some of the temporary signs based on the season.
No, how, how?
I sell ice cream from April to October, and that's my-
How do we know who's selling ice cream? We can't read the sign.
Yeah, but you can do, you can do for a highway overlay district.
We can for H C's?
Yeah, specific things for those corridors.
That's right. And then the insurance company and the H C, they don't get to have the same signs as the ice cream place next door.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is, how we could deal with that, for sure.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think how to be nicer to businesses as possible than having to worry about what day is this and-
I think you could definitely say, certain number of signs are allowed from month to month, and fewer signs are allowed during the winter, or whatever. I don't know whose season might be up or down for different people, depending on if I'm selling Christmas trees, it's one time of year, if I'm selling ice cream, uh, it's a different time of year. What is my up season?
Yep. Well, then we did kinda think about a hundred days, you know, that's also the length of time approximately of a campaign.
We were thinking political.
And then, uh, also like apple season, like, there are things that are about a hundred days, and that you can apply for an extension if you needed it.
Yeah, I'm just trying not, I mean, I'm selling ice cream, why would I have to apply for an extension?
Well, but you could, maybe you could do like, uh, you could hit the hundred day mark by doing sixty and, um, you know, forty.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, then you could hit the hundred day, and then, I mean, you move the sign.
There's nothing I think to prohibit you from looking down-
Put a new date on the back, right?
Your five original temporary signs, and maybe getting five slightly different signs, when you get five new ice cream flavors. And putting those out, we're all gonna go out for ice cream after this, clearly, we have a problem.
Clearly.
Five-
You parked the truck out front, didn't you, Deacon? Five ice, you know, the five new ice cream flavor signs will get a new set of signs and dates on them after a hundred days. So, I mean, we, we did try to be thoughtful. The materials only last, but for so long on a lot of those temporary signs, before they start to look-
It's not going to, I mean, it doesn't solve the issue of the hate has no home sign being there literally forever. There's no way to do that practically. I mean, they just pull it out, well, this is a new sign. It's just, you just can't, it's hard to do that. And then you talk about off-premise and on-premise. It's very hard to regulate the difference between an off-premise or on-premise temporary sign, because what defines the off-premise part? What's on it relative to that parcel? Well, we're content neutral. I can put, if I wanna put my one temporary sign in front of my house, nobody will see it because the right of way is so far back. But if I did put it in the right of way, I could put somebody else's business on it in front of my house. And so now that business gets ten signs, cuz I got ten buddies.
One more caution, too, is, you know, we've been talking about ice cream, which is a good discussion, a good discussion. But, uh, I mean, you can't draft the ordinance in such a way that it would be favoring ice cream at the expense of baloney.
Right.
They both have the same commercial speech rights, so.
I'm not sure they do.
If you're Oscar Mayer.
If you gotta read that sign and, and make a decision on whether it says ice cream or baloney, now you're back where you restarted.
Right.
Baloney flavored ice cream.
So back to-
No, Gary.
What Mr. Whitson suggested, why don't we just have a, let's talk temporary at the next meeting and invite the public to come to talk temporary?
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea.
So, I, I, what I would want is, do you want some general discussion, put in a legal ad? Do you want to try to encourage Julia to write a story saying, hey, the county wants to, how are you going to engage the public so that they know you want to hear from them about a particular subject? And, and I'm sure the Piedmont crew, and Jackson, this, the group that has been meeting on signs, they're informed, but there's a whole different constituency out there that are not in, is in great-
They're gonna get the word out, trust me.
But that's, you know, one-
We're coolers back there.
Our L E P can send a letter saying they're about to allow a hundred temporary signs in each parcel, and then you'll have everybody here.
They're very good at getting the word out.
Taking all signs down by January.
I just think it's important, too, that, you know, that there could be a panic on either side, and I think that it's really important for people to note that we are, we're only attempting to capture and allow what's already going on in the county.
Or, or at least what the community thinks is appropriate.
Right.
Yeah. Then, um, you know, Mr. Deacon's told us that the signs are very important to his business. Well-
I'm dead with that. I had a sign blow down in the week that had first year of sales.
That, that was probably not on the promises that you're operating the truck from.
Yeah, no.
Well, and I've heard, I've heard from several business owners that they're concerned, and rightfully so.
You would want to engage all sectors of the community to provide input.
And if you wanna do that, there's one sure way to do it.
Tell Bill.
No, tell Bill, that's your number. That's good here. Say you wanna discuss a dog ordinance, you'll get every single slice of the pie in here. And then, and then they'll realize that they're noise.
Leash ordinance?
Noise ordinance as well.
We're gonna talk about noise ordinance and some signs.
I know.
And bargain all that stuff. Then you'll have a very accurate cross-section.
Dark side.
Well, we will have probably a robust turnout at our next evening session, um, from Chester Gap already.
At least from one, from one road in Chester Gap.
So just be clear.
They don't have any signs up there.
That we may need a good hour to work through that, um, as well.
So if we wanna do this on temporary signs, is there anything, I mean, is there another one we'd like to do?
See, off-premise, off-premise is so tied into temporary.
And hay bale, so that it's all kind of in there.
So, and the fluttering signs, too.
Those are-
Those are animated.
Animated, commercial zone animated signs.
Very well aware what they're called.
So-
But the same people that take advantage, I should say, utilize the temporary signs, many of them also use the flutter signs. And a lot of them are business people, and frankly, it's hard for people to come out to these meetings a lot of time. They already work, they're full-time business owners, and, you know, they don't work nine to five, they work round the clock.
I think you'd call and cookie ball one year pretty easily, I think, if, if they were, if they called any-
You could also ask businesses of Rappahannock to send that letter to their members.
Um, so, going back, Gary, to, you mentioned in passing a legal notice, obviously, it's, we're just talking about-
It's not required, yeah.
But we could put, we could put a notice in the paper that we're, we're moving closer to resolution of
Yeah.
penultimate ordinance likely related to a, um, temporary signs, B, off-premise signs, and C, commercial zone signage, or something like that, and at least get people's attention.
And, you know, quite frankly, you, you're gonna, you wanna hear from all different angles, and like you said, you, you know some business owners in your district. You each have business owners in your district, so it would make sense for you to talk to them, saying, hey, we're trying to figure out, what do we want here in Rappahannock County? Get their thoughts, encourage them to come. If they can't come, encourage them to, you know, give you their ideas. It doesn't have to be in legalese, it can be, you know, I really think that this sort of sign works, or I saw, you know, I used that kind of sign last year, and the thing fell apart before it was any good, and it wasn't, it wasn't what I thought it was gonna be. You can engage those parties to round out your, you know, input.
Yeah. I think maybe sending it to businesses of Rappahannock and let them broadcast it is a good idea, too, just the, the clips of the animated signs, the temporary signs, and the hay bale signs, since we seem to be wanting to lump hay bale under temporary.
Wasn't a subcategory?
It, well, it's, it's a parallel. It's, it's temporary. It's not permanent, by nature of the-
The cows are gonna eat it eventually.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, I think those are the three that we should maybe target first.
I think it's a good idea, though, to put a paper, ad in the paper, so, like, people come out.
Yeah, I think most people don't pay attention.
I know, and that's the thing, it's just that I hear you all, I mean, you know, we're trying to have this conversation, it's kind of difficult to get, you know, more people engaged that maybe don't even know what's going on, and I think it is incumbent upon me to kinda, kinda travel around more and talk to specific business owners and just, you know.
Is the petition that had been signed previously with those eighty signatures, is that part of the public record that can be also put up on board docs?
So my opinion is that, um, citizens have the right to share information to board supervisors, your draft, your petitions. You're informing the board, this representative body, on what to do. If you want to share information to the rest of the community, there's a lot of ways to do that. You can put it on Facebook, you can do all kinds of things. Uh, so if you wanna talk to the board, you can share a lot of stuff to the board. You wanna talk to the rest of the community, there's many ways to do that that aren't local government. So we're just not gonna take every letter we get and put it on board docs. It's, it's not the purpose.
So, is this a petition, a petition that covered all five districts of this county on a particular issue?
Was delivered to the board, and the board absorbed it and saw that there's a lot of people that think this is really a big deal, and they didn't adopt an ordinance, and they decided we need to talk about this a lot more.
Yeah, I, I do wanna say that. I, I found it, uh, very important, that, yeah, we, this was, we advertised this in June of twenty twenty-three, the first public hearing.
Yeah, August.
August was when yours was, I think.
It was the planning question, well, anyway. The point is, is that we didn't vote on this because there was public input, and people were like, whoa, we, we think this needs some work, so I think that's why we're here right now.
And we've had joint meetings with the planning commission.
But I think that if we can get it out there that, you know, hey, we're gonna be talking about temporary signs, that's one chunk of this list that we're gonna go through.
Yep.
And we can start working towards it.
Yeah, I think from engagement, yeah, sometimes you have to go to them. So if the fight is, you know, do you go to a particular church, talk to the people at your church afterwards or something? You gotta find the people where they are and talk to them and let them know what we're doing, because not everybody's tuned into what's on board docs, what's in the newspaper, whether it's an article, or it's a legal ad, or, or an ad that's not legal, but it's, you know, formed like that.
Well, people have lives, and they voted for us, and they asked us to do a job, and we're here to do the job that they elected us to do. And a lot of people just trust us to do it, and they don't have time to carve out to come to a seven o'clock meeting and a two o'clock meeting once a month.
Right. I think that's-
So you want to target March sixth to tou- to try to get the public to tell you about temporary? Mason, Mason?
Let's go back to our truth. Um, yeah.
But, I mean, in that, it, like, you know, people like Karen, or M K, or others who, you know, really spent a lot of time drafting and providing input, not to, not to burden them even further, but, I mean, if we stay as narrowly focused, like, on the question of temporary for now, that gives everyone something to pounce on.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to think, uh, to strategize some on how to phrase the, the, uh, notice in a way that's like a survey question, that you're not leading anybody in any direction.
Right, yeah, it's almost like, um, I, I almost picture, um, like a bullet point, like, yeah, board supervisors is, as part of a, a revamp of the sign ordinance, um, initially will address the following, or initially will focus on finalizing ordinance language for the following, temporary signs, off-premise signs. And it has to be, I think, sufficiently but not overwhelmingly descriptive, so people know what the heck that means. Because if you go temporary signs and off-premise signs, and it doesn't mean anything to anyone.
How about pictures?
So, um-
Put commercial, put it in temporary, commercial, and non-commercial. I mean, that, that will, people will read it and say, oh, well, I use those. Cuz it's true, when people are talking about a sign ordinance, they might not, you know, mid, I'm just-
And say, you know, something like, with the potential for limiting the, the duration and, yeah, no, but it's true, I mean-
Change is coming.
I would say changing, because it's actually expanding. It's not limiting, it's expanding. It, it's an expansion of what's already in existence, it, which is a reflection of field conditions currently in the county.
So for the record, our, our ability to enforce would be to the most lenient temporary sign of any category or ilk. We could potentially get away with enforcing all of them for that. But I, I mean, I'm not willing to ask him to take somebody to court with the ordinance we have now, so what's the sense of sending a portion of the letter?
All right.
So is it just temp signs? So I hear bullets, I hear just temp signs? I don't have a very clear picture of what I'm doing.
We're getting there. Well, you, you raised a point that off-premise signs are sort of, by association, part of the temporary sign.
They kinda are.
Discussion. I don't, I don't care, we can just limit it to temporary signs and leave it at that. Duration, duration, and size. Yeah, I mean, trust me, they're, we'll hear enough about duration and size limits to, uh, entertain everyone for a long time. I mean, cuz it's, I mean, we know where the clash is. People want Rappahannock County to look beautiful and pristine at all times. We also want, business owners wanna be able to run their businesses. Um, so, yeah, I mean, we're seeking ultimately some common ground that allows people to enjoy this beautiful place while, um, other people still are able to promote their businesses, and where do we end up on that? And to me, I mean, and this is where I do agree with Van, it does, for sure, I agree that it comes down to time limit. I'm not sure about square footage right now, I don't know, but we gotta, we gotta go somewhere.
I think in this discussion of temporary, I think you have to bring in the concept of flags and feather signs and wind-driven stuff. When people think of a temporary sign, they're thinking of these feather signs. And they're also thinking of the yard step-in sign for a typical political thing. I think they're, that's grouped in together. You can get their input on, okay, we want one sign. Is, is the wind allowed to move the thing? No, okay. We can, we can work around that. Or it can have five ones that the wind can move.
Okay. So I guess it would be, I mean, we can just, why don't we just keep it simple then, and just say that we're, we're moving toward, I guess, a penultimate draft, dra- penultimate draft ordinance language regarding temporary signs that likely would involve, um, time and size, not limitations, but whatever. Not limitations, but whatever.
Yeah, I think from going sixth grade level, we'll stay away from the penultimate.
Yes.
Well.
We need to hear from you.
Okay.
Yep.
Likes his fifteen dollar words.
Whatever, Miss Colmer.
All right. Is that enough?
I think that would be why.
Anyway, yeah, just, we're, we're talking about temporary signs. We're getting closer to final product. If you wanna say something about how we're gonna regulate them, now's your chance. How's that?
Yeah, oh, oh.
We'll, we'll get it.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on to Berkeley.
What, I mean, can we, uh, real quickly before we move, um, beyond the sign ordinance? So, okay, say our focus is on temporary signs. What's the, what's, what's our next logical step forward? Where, where do we go from there?
So you, at your last meeting, you talked about wanting to hit these kind of main points. I don't think you wanna introduce the next point until you, if you wanna go piecemeal, would talk about temporary, hear from the public on temporary.
Yeah.
And I guess the next would be talk about off premises, hear from the public on that or, or some stepwise approach?
Or bundle, what else, what else in order to?
The, the hay bale thing is a thing, but then you got public art, that, that realm, that will bring a few people out. And then there was, uh, you brought up just the permanent sign dimensions. I mean, do you? Do you wanna push, go to low profile monument type signs only? No tall pole might about base signs? You can do that.
Okay, so it seems like temporary signs is an awfully good place to do this.
There's a lot more to discuss.
You know, some of those other things, maybe, maybe we do sort of bundle, but they're not as.
I think I'd keep, uh, the public art mural thing all by itself. That'll bring plenty out.
I agree, but other stuff might be more, um, or less sort of interesting to people. It's more technical in nature.
Mm-hmm.
Have you thought about a change of venue when you do this that will accommodate more people?
Looks like we've got room here tonight. I mean.
March sixth seems a little tight.
May sixth.
May.
They're gonna get the notice after a week.
Okay. I mean.
What I think would be really unfortunate would be if there was a lot of misinformation before the meeting. I hope that people will stay on message and that we are seeking public input because this is important to people of Rappahannock County. And we really wanna hear from all perspectives so we can make a, an informed decision. What I'm concerned is happening is that there tends to be a knee jerk reaction, sometimes on both sides and a proliferation of misinformation. And almost like a panic, like we had at the two o'clock meeting today. What are you gonna talk about during closed session? Are you gonna make it an open session? How could you consider doing something in closed session? These are really important questions. And we've been working on them since March of twenty twenty. And a lot of what has transpired has been. A diversion through nobody's fault particularly, except there is obviously this tension between. What businesses need to successfully do business and what exists in the county already. And what people fear when they look at counties around us and the expansion and the development of those counties. And there has to be some middle ground there. And so I hope that we can have some productive discussions about this and not such divisive discussions about this. Because at the end of the day, this work has got to get done because currently we have nothing enforceable on the books. And when I look at this agenda tonight, this was my worst case scenario for an agenda for us, which is we're still entrenched in the sign ordinance. And we've, we're well into the Berkeley group discussion, which are two high level discussions that are very difficult to carry on at the same time. And very important and hard to engage the public interest. So it's hard enough to get one of them across the finish line, yet get both of them across the finish line. So I really hope that both sides will come to the table with the spirit of let's get this done. We all live in the county together. There's very few complaints. Things are clearly working. Let's get together and get united and get it across the finish line. So we can peacefully coexist. And when something comes up that we all find objectionable, we can enforce it. I just hope that everyone comes together in that spirit because it is important that we get it done and it has been years. I appreciate you taking this out of mothballs and putting it back on the agenda. I know it is not pleasant or easy to do. And I hope the public appreciates how very much work, um, planning commission and our staff and this board has put into it. And we can get it done for our county's sake. Thank you.
Respect the language, because sides. There are many sides. I don't think there are two sides. And that's a, what you said, I can really resonate with, but it isn't just us against them.
I don't wanna sit and disagree about how many sides there are. I just wanna get it done. That's our answer. Because I, I, I was in, I was in the meeting prior, immediately prior to COVID breaking out. And this was a pressing issue then, so March of twenty twenty, and here we are, April of twenty twenty-four, and it's not done. So, um, it's been shuffled and like, I, I'm not a finger pointer. I don't like to place blame. It's been shuffled and put on the back burner and things do come up and sometimes things are more important or applications are made that require immediate attention. But at the same time, we have to get it done.
I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the next item.
Let's get that done too.
Yeah.
Zoning ordinance update phase one.
Right, so let me just, uh, a hundred thousand foot level.
I hate to stop this right here, but do you have the wording you need for the advertisement?
Uh, I.
Cause we kinda got there and I felt like we never.
Yeah, I think, um, I'd rather be.
You're good.
General context, the way you said, rather than you try to craft something.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
And maybe I'll call Monica.
And if we can get something that I can send out to businesses of Rappahannock or whatever, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so, um, the sign ordinance. Discussion is driven by Supreme Court changes that drastically changed what's happening, um, in that area. The zoning ordinance reorganization and all that process, not the same. You don't have to do this at all.
Let's not do it then.
Yeah, you just throw it away. Don't have to do it. You hired the Berkeley group to perform a diagnostic and tell you things that. Uh, how, what they thought of your current ordinance, where maybe there were gaps with state code and areas you could work on. Um, and then that moved on to more detailed work in their phase one. Which, uh, was a little bit too broad for us to bite off and we said, uh, you know, we really don't wanna go that far in phase one. Because we don't know if we, how much we wanna rely on outside resources to help us with the zoning ordinance. But what we'll do is we'll allow you to guide us on reorganization of the document and improvement of process. And try to stay away from the, as I've said, who can do what where, like signs. And, and then we hired them to do that. And, um, they gave you a crosswalk on how the current ordinance could fall into a new structure with a new layout. And that crosswalk then fell into a new table contents. And into four articles that were largely rewritten with a lot of material moving around. To a full ordinance, two hundred and some odd pages that is reorganized, new content on process. And then a few areas that we've talked about a number of times, um, and that you've talked about with planning commission that were more substantive. Like, do you wanna have civil fines, um, added to your repertoire rather than just criminal? And you said, yeah, let's do that. So that's in there. Um, site plans. Do, do we wanna have one size fits all site plans? Do we wanna try to have this set up where depending on the intensity of use? You maybe have a sliding scale of what somebody needs to provide in a site plan. And the conversation was, yeah, we, we should do that. So that's in there. Uh, and there's a few other areas that, that fell into that same realm. We talked about proffers that were brought up today. That, uh, your curtain ordinance really is not protective and you're exposed. Well, we ought to probably fix that while we're at it. So those are in there and they're not all perfect right now. But where we are in the process is that the four main articles that had major changes, article one, two, three and nine. Um, those have been reviewed and let's say gone through two or three times. And that's all collapsed into the full ordinance that's available for you on board docs. And then leading up to the most recent planning commission meeting, um, was really the first time. That any of us had really reviewed the full ordinance, chapter one seventy, together. We, we really focused on those articles that were changing, one, two, three and nine. And so now we've got the whole thing. And so I spent time and went through the first half of it and looked at it from the big picture and I haven't done the back half yet. And that is what I went through with the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. And we went through, focused on those areas that I've kinda highlighted that had the most of the changes. Um, and explained to them that, uh, if we go over to that planning commission agenda. Cause I didn't wanna attach multiple things multiple times. Attached to that, you have two files. One is the entire ordinance, chapter one seventy. With Berkeley group's red line that had, things have moved all around to a new order and it basically looks like a Christmas tree, it's just all colors everywhere. And I just found it's impossible for me to work on it. But I want it from a transparency standpoint for it to be available. Then you have, the other document is a clean version with track changes that I have most recently. Um, reviewed, looking at the entire document. And oh, by the way, the table contents is linked, so if you're looking at this, you just click on that to go to a session. So what, this clean version with changes, the blue changes. Those are changes that I've made to the latest version provided by Berkeley group, which they call version four. And I don't think I ever saw version three. It must've been an internal thing that they had, they're bouncing around. Uh, and so I went through this version four with these comments. In pretty decent detail with the planning commission, focusing on those main areas. And I can do that with this body. I know after the discussion at planning commission, Ms. Smith said. I think it's important for the board to know where we are, planning commission. Um, because the last thing any, any of the planning commissioners want, as I would believe, is for them and certainly me. And Art and Michelle to put a bunch of time in this and have a DOA when it gets here. I've got other things I can be doing. And if you wanna do this, let's do it. If we don't wanna do it, let's not do it. Um, if we wanna take it slow or take it fast, I need to know. Uh, but I really don't wanna spend a lot of time. Reorganizing the zoning ordinance as recommended by the Berkeley group, if there's no interest to do the project. Which I've not, nobody's told me, but we really need to know where the board is on this.
And I think I said in the, in the planning commission meeting, it doesn't need to be a tonight answer. Like, I don't want anyone to feel like they're on the spot and like they have to give feedback tonight. But I do think it is, these are important changes and they are true changes. Um, we all talked about those changes before the language was crafted. But, um, but talking about them and seeing them are, are two different things entirely.
What was the general feedback from your?
Um, I think they're all things that we think are important. The proffers, as Mr. Curry said, weren't all fleshed out. The major minor site plan, um, we felt like that was targeting what we had anticipated. And would be very useful in reviewing applications to, um, to be able to have those clearly delineated expectations. Um, when you submit your application. Uh, there was proffers and site plans and there was the third thing. What was the third thing that we talked about at length? Oh, the penalties. That was the third thing, um, which, you know. I don't think anybody said, would necessarily think that that's a great thing, but it does give us a, a leg to stand on when it, when it becomes a legal matter.
Well, and.
It's, it's a start.
When it comes time to enforcement, I mean, criminal penalties is a, a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
You know, we don't wanna do that. We just wanna, we just want compliance. And so if there can be a civil penalty and, you know, it's a slap on the wrist, you pay a fine and you do what you have to do. We can keep you out of criminal court. Uh, we don't wanna do that. So it's, it's tiered. You know, if you, if you build up a bunch of fines and civil penalties, well, then you're gonna be in criminal trouble.
So, so similar, just thinking about next steps, similar to what we just did on the sign ordinance front. Could we similarly isolate something here that we could review ourselves? Um, manageable amount of material. Determine if we're generally okay with where the language stands and it could be like the highlights you just mentioned. Um, if those all fall within one.
Pretty close together.
Article, um, and then, and, and then. Put out a notice. Okay, anybody comment?
I think this is a lot tougher.
Okay.
Uh, from the notice side, the. I'm sure citizens have an opinion on whether they wanna have a civil penalty or criminal penalty, but I think that that is somewhat lost on people that aren't an attorney. Or have been through the process before. I'm sure you'll have good in, input, but it's just, it's not as tangible as. Hey, do I wanna step inside in front of businesses or not?
Right. Okay.
Now, there will, you know, if, the, the logical process, we're, this theoretically is phase one and, you know, the later phases do pick up the who can do what where telecommunications, all these things. Signs are folding in. So, you know, those parts of those ending ordinance, um, amendment, those are really citizen intensive. And so when we originally talked with the Berkeley group about, do we wanna have town hall meetings? Is it appropriate for this phase? The feeling of board was, oh, maybe not. They're willing to do them. Um, but. Kind of these esoteric.
Yeah.
Um, concepts of setting up the structure of an ordinance are tough to engage community. You have, definitely have certain people that are plugged in.
Well, then there, there were two things that you brought up toward the end of the discussion at the planning session, Gary, which was that. Um, a change in, a change in use would, would also kind of fall on the radar, which is a departure from our current practice.
Um, so that was in the, in talking about permits. And when do you need to get a zoning permit? So right now, article three per, well, proposed article three permits and applications is set up. With each division is the different type of application. So it's a zoning text and map amendment. A conditional zoning amendment, which is a, is a map amendment with proffers attached. Uh, special exceptions, variances, site plans, and then zoning permits. So if you go to division seven zoning permits. Right now. Our zoning ordinance requires an individual to obtain a zoning permit only when you need a VDH, VDH permit. Or you disturb the ground. That's it. So someone could put a two story addition on their structure without any plumbing or bathrooms or something. On their structure without any plumbing or bathrooms or something, you know, there's. They could put a drive-through window on the side of their building and it wouldn't require zoning review. And that's just not appropriate in my mind. So this is built out to require zoning permits in more situations. Not all situations, but more situations. And that is a departure. And one that brought, came up in the past, what was appropriate or not appropriate and when you're going to get into people's business of what they're doing.
And I do think that is a property rights issue and I did want the board to be aware of that. Because it is a change. And then the other thing that you mentioned at the end of the discussion. Was the Berkeley group's recommendation for sort of uniformity of conditions amongst those zoning districts. Which I have to say, we only passed on that. You know, we only touched on that in passing.
Having got to that part of the, the chapter yet, so the other big picture that the Berkeley group is recommending. Is that all of the special requirements that are in the current or zoning ordinance, chapter one seventy. For example, two and, five, ten and twenty acres for tourist homes and ag and conservation. Or a tourist home, if it's on a private lane, that private lane needs to be a type two road. Those only apply to situations for special exceptions. So in the use table, if you have a zone where tourist homes are allowed by right, which there are, village commercial, for example. None of those special requirements apply. Totally outside. And so the Berkeley group said, you know, that's kind of out there to not have any use regulations whatsoever for your permitted by right uses. And so their recommendation is to transition those special requirements to use regulations and, and they would be applied to the use regardless of where it is. However, in those use regulations. They would be differentiated by zone. So in, in A and C, you would still need ten and twenty and that would just wouldn't apply to village commercial. But it will take a critical review. Of, of that information that was focused on special exceptions and how it will impact a by right use.
That's going to be a difficult ad to get the public in there.
Well, you know, the ad is.
Remove and replace. Remove and replace.
That did seem to me like, again, I, I wondered if it was a property rights thing that, you know, what you've always been allowed to do. Now you'll be subject to additional. Conditions. So, I mean, to me, these are, these are major departures from our expectations when we began this exercise. And I, I just always want to bring. Ideally, something that can be adopted relatively quickly to the board. It's not always possible, but I do try to keep you abreast of, of what I see are critical changes and important movements on the planning commission.
Yeah, that same tourist home talks about, you know, being able to require, you know, fire extinguishers and lane line telephones and stuff for tourist homes, things like that. Doesn't apply where it's by right. Why would those matter? You know.
Well, and it's, it's interesting because like when tourist home applications have come up in the sp- formerly special use. Permit review process, it always seemed really funny to get super far afield and go, oh, hey. Make sure you have smoke detectors and fire extinguishers and that's, this kind of resolves that. It's like, it's, these are just basic. Standards, but like to, we're putting conditions on.
Yeah, there are no conditions allowed at by right, but because by definition, the conditions aren't needed to align it with a by right use. But as, but a requirements, you know, those aren't conditions. Those are, you know, you have to meet these requirements. But yeah, arguably, they're not required. And so are you further restricting somebody's right in a by right situation? Quite possibly. Does anybody really have the concept? Know that? I mean, I had a conversation with Mr. Fraser about this in the past, how, how they didn't apply to any of these by rights and he was thinking about it and like. Well, that's not how we ever thought about it. But it's the way it is. We don't have a lot of by right. But in the occasions we do.
The thing you mentioned was like screening of, of vehicles or parking areas. You know, some places you expect to see vehicles and, and not to request a screen. Parking areas or that sort of thing. But then if it's in agriculture, we, we do request that. And it would be a very difficult thing to, to make uniform.
And so you would have, be uniform by zoning district and you would look through those special requirements today. And as they turn into use regulations, they might be assigned to only certain districts. Ag and conservation as opposed to commercial.
So I guess if. If this material doesn't wind itself to sort of a public exciting, exciting happenings on the horizon. Then I guess it's, it's incumbent upon us to try to wrap some of this up.
Some, but I think you do have, you've got a handful of citizens who are willing to do deep dive. So, you know, hey, we'll take it all, we'll take all the deep dives we can get. So that's good. Get the input from that. If you can inspire other people to do it, that's wonderful. I just, it's not very sexy.
Right. So what would, what would be sensible for us to tackle either? I mean, you guys are all going to smack me, but either tonight or at our next meeting and I mean, how do we, how do we move ahead?
So I think.
Cause Christine, very, I very much appreciate, you know, she's highlighted for us areas that she wants us to focus on. So let's focus.
Yeah. So I focused on the first half of, of this document so far.
Okay.
And, and I'll focus on the second half next. So in the meeting, between meetings, I think each of you should, you know, plan to sit down and really read it and think about it. And if we want to have a work session where we do that together, line by line, or tonight, or whenever. That's another, that's, that can be done as well.
I think a work session might be a good idea because I know we'll have some sign discussion next meeting and I do anticipate robust attendance on the one tourist home application. And then I think the following month we'll probably have multiple tourist home applications. That I'm aware of at this time. So it, it may be who.
We'll talk in here at the board.
At the regular board supervisors meeting. So it may be who wants to have a breakout work session. There are, there are multiple working documents, which I, I find challenging. Multiple color revisions. You know, it's a little bit of following the bouncing ball and the ball continues to bounce. So.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think line by line together would make sense. And then we can just. We can either say, okay, and then kind of set that material aside and move on, or we can.
So where does the planning commission fit into that? Arguably, in a, in a larger community, you know, you might not see it till the end. And the planning commission is going to do a bunch of work with a whole, you know, fleet of staff people and, you know, they're going to give you something that's really polished by the time it gets to you. We're not that community and I would expect that the planning commission, having gone through the sign ordinance and giving you something on a silver platter that they thought was what you wanted and it isn't, they're going to be a little hesitant to do that with this. So do you try to have a joint meeting with them to go through it line by line?
I think if you get more than five people at the table, it gets clunky.
But I thought, but I, I thought you were saying at the outset on this discussion that we do have something from the planning commission.
They reviewed this, just like you might review it. They didn't provide constructive feedback.
We did think that telecommunications needed more flushing out in the minor major site plan. It is a whirlwind tour. I'm telling you, when you go through these things, it is, it is a lot of information hitting you very quickly.
And so the, the back half where it talks about telecommunications and all that, that just hasn't changed. Right? And because how many moving things do you want to have at one time?
Yeah.
And this, idea of this was to move stuff around and fi- and clean up the process, improve the process.
Right. And then we went over articles, what was it?
One, two, three, and nine.
One, two, three, and nine. Right. And so you're saying with the major and minor site.
One, two, three, nine are in here.
Yeah, yeah, totally. And I'm, as I'm now was looking over this, I mean, I have to say it is way easier to find this.
You just can't read the one with all the track changes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we did get the state code in sync with IFRS night.
Yes, except for not for things like telecommunications since.
Stuff that we haven't gotten to.
That, you know, just. It's a big enough bite right now to try to keep things straight.
Okay, so if we, so I'm hearing a work session go line by line?
I think, I mean, it sounds tedious, but I just don't know how else you work through this material.
No, I think it sounds like a good idea.
And, and of course I can add the line numbers to it if that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
The computer chokes a little bit when I play with this document.
On two hundred and fifty page document.
Can you divide it by like every fifty pages or something?
I could, but then the table contents will.
So we're, we're basically just. Thanks, Art. If we need to send it, send something back to the planning commission, then we do, or?
Yeah, we can memorialize it and, and, and send a, you know, communication back to the planning commission, you know. Looks good, requires work, please pay attention to.
We thought we wanted this stuff. We don't.
Turns out we don't like it after all.
Right. Well, I mean, like civil penalties, just for example, you know, and now that we've looked into it, you know, let's not do that.
So what's the?
Not, not suggesting that, but there might be some big area that you see.
But just to set expectations for interested parties, what, what, what is the scope of our, what will the scope of our work session be to look at what?
How long did it take? It took us quite a while to get through those three items the other evening, Gary.
Basically review the current status of the document as revised.
Okay.
I don't know how better to.
No, but I'm asking about the, the reference to one, two, three, and nine.
Oh, yeah, they're just in there. So one, two, and three are in the front half that I've kind of reviewed in its current reconstituted form. And so also remind you that we're still working on a budget.
Yeah.
We're going to have a public hearing in April.
I, I would say I.
And you have a few meetings mid-month.
I, I don't anticipate you working on this while we're finishing up the budget.
No, that's what Bonnie's for. I can do this.
Okay.
That's a Saturday morning.
I'm going to make you sign a document.
Is there, are articles one, two, and three and the revised language embedded within those? Does that provide critical mass or that would, that would?
Yes. So I, I think, you know, Article one.
I want to take Article three on its own.
Yeah, one and two are, are kind of the really high level. Three is the one that goes through all the different kinds of permits. How you apply, when you, what you need to submit when, who reviews what when, all that stuff. And it's long. Includes all the site plan stuff.
It was a lot.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I, I just think we need some sort of manageable size because if we're all tired like we are this evening. And still looking at things, it's not going to.
Okay, let, let's do that. Let's do one, two, and three. And sit down and do one, two, and three and go line by line and, you know, where it hasn't changed, but it's just the structure, we can move a little quicker and where it's substantive and it'll take hours.
One, one, two, and nine are.
One, two, and three.
One, two, and three.
Three is, is on the old.
I, I wouldn't do nine yet because I haven't, I haven't.
Yep.
Let's set out to do one, two, and three and if we only did.
One and two.
One and two, then we'll.
Start and.
At least it's movement.
And we can, we can say that Karen was right.
Thank you, Karen. So what do you guys, do you want to do this after budget season?
Yeah, like June.
I think we should do it tonight.
I need another cup of coffee.
Quite a birthday for you, don't you?
That was your birthday? Happy birthday. I can't believe we don't have cake.
And coffee. Coffee would be great.
It's a pretty easy one.
Uh, that was Bonnie's job, sorry.
We've met on Valentine's Day before and we've, we've met on my anniversary, but we've never met on my birthday.
All right. So the next meetings are?
Yeah. So we're here.
So the fifteenth.
Public hearing.
So the public hearings Monday, the fifteenth, then you have a meeting the ne- seven days after that on Monday. Then there's, I guess, we'll skip a week. And then we have May sixth, regular meeting. It's possible thirteen and fifteenth. These are backed up at the tail end of the budget cycle. The school board budget needs to be adopted by May fifteenth. May. So.
Could we pencil in one of those May dates?
Yeah.
Cross our fingers. Because we'll be meeting on the fifteenth and the twenty second. We can talk about.
Given what's happening with state budget, I would guess we're going to the end.
Oh, boy. Like last year?
Yeah.
We have to go on.
Meanwhile, we're going to invite people in to talk about sign ordinance.
On May sixth.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Well, it gives us some time to read this. That just do some work on the sign ordinance. Outside of the meeting. And then I, I, I mean, I, I think if we.
Targeting the thirteenth might not be a terrible idea.
Yeah, I think we could because we can always talk about it on the fifteenth and the twenty second too. We're going to see, and the sixth, we're going to see each other three more times. And we could always just move it. But I mean, I, this is going to take a while to sit down and read.
Absolutely.
And if.
And like, and like Ms. Smith said, like, well, there's the sign ordinance. We're doing these things at the same time. So. Space is good.
Yeah, especially about the juggling is, is, it is just two things that are going on right now. It is easier to read though. I just, I didn't think there was any value in me adding additional inline comments to the one that had all the comments.
Yeah.
I just, I couldn't see this forest trees scenario. Oh, oh, well, I guess that marines me. Glad you think so so far.
With my colleagues, I'd, I'd sent back like the ninth draft and I'm like, when you send it back, just make clean it. Like no more track changes. I can't take it. At some point it becomes counterproductive.
But we want to be transparent as we can. Yeah.
And I think, I think what we found ourselves in was the Berkeley group didn't keep track changes.
Well, they did in the other one. You can see it's.
To a point. And then at some point you kind of go, all right, I trust what everyone else previously has done and let's work clean.
Well, and at some point in time, the track changes help us identify what might be new and wasn't ever in there before, which is really tough when things are moving from one section to another section, whether it's been moved or.
Deleted.
Deleted and inserted. And it helps us figure out what's gone. And so that is, I think, helpful at a preliminary stage, but at some point.
You got to work.
We have to work on what is it that we want in the final thing. And have the old stuff right next to it. Have the track changes next to it.
That's kind of what I'm hoping we were. Like soon, in the next month or two, that we actually get to that point, at least with a portion of the ordinance. Because otherwise this is, yeah. We got it, we got it. Many other fish to fry.
Yes. And this is only phase one.
Okay. Ben?
Well, I think we've worn out.
Motion to adjourn.
Everyone looks tired. For the sake of the public's good.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. You can be crazy. All right.